Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, good evening. So, welcome. Welcome to the January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen Board of Education. Could we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. So, our first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any?
We have no written communication at this time.
Okay, no written communication. Thank you. So, we're at our information items, and the first item is the Popular Annual Financial Report Award for two thousand and seventeen. There's a Government Finance Officers Association that has presented this award, and Dr. Witherspoon...
Well, good evening, Board. You know, it's almost so much fun when I do get a chance, and it seems like it's fairly often, to come to this podium and to present one of the many awards that the district receives over time. I actually have two awards to present tonight, and I'm going to ask Mary Rodino, our Chief Financial Officer, if she'll come up and join me, and I'm going to describe each of these and present them to you. And Mary, after I present each one, since they each weigh a ton, you're welcome to put it down before I hand you the other one. But the first is the Popular Annual Financial Report Award for fiscal year seventeen. The Government Finance Officers Association has once again awarded ETHS its award for outstanding achievement in popular annual financial reporting. Now, in order to receive this award, an entity must produce high-quality popular annual financial reports. By the way, we didn't make that name up. That's a terminology in the finance world, specifically designed to be readily accessible and easily understandable to the general public and other interested parties without who might not have a background in public finance. Now, the district has received this award now for the first time six years ago, and you can see that they try to conserve on awards and put a year if you continue to receive it, but you notice we're filling this one up pretty fast.
I did misplace one, that's why there's...
Yeah, actually, and I could see the little outline. It was there at one time.
So, we have six.
So, they actually are there. But this is really an award for which every public entity anywhere, and certainly in the state, could potentially qualify, and yet it is a rare award to get because it does mean making a much higher standard. And we actually have with us tonight Kathy Mills, sitting here behind us, and Kathy works closely with Mary in helping to publish this. And to Mary and our finance department, and to Kathy, congratulations. This is a very prestigious award.
Thank you.
But that's not all. We also have once again received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for FY seventeen. Now, the Government Finance Officers Association has awarded ETHS this certificate of excellence in financial reporting for having met or exceeded the program's high standards for its financial reporting and accountability. I think this will give you a little idea when I talk about the rarity of these awards. Twenty-three school districts in Illinois, and by the way, there are over eight hundred twenty-three school districts in Illinois, and five hundred and fifty-four school districts across the nation, by the way, there are about fifteen thousand, received this award last year, to give you an idea about how rare this award is. And we have now received it for, and our medallions, nine consecutive years. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'll turn those over to you.
Thank you.
And that concludes this section, segment of the report.
If I could just add one thing, the Popular Annual Financial Report that I brought some printed copies of tonight will be mailed to everyone in our residential zip codes. Did it go out already? Soon. It's coming. And it's on our website.
Thank you. Thank you. Mary, where are those awards, like, hung and kept?
They're in the outer area of our office suite, so the first door right on the other side of the fireplace. And to Eric's point about how long we've gotten the budget and the financial statement awards, prior to two thousand and twelve, they sent you a plaque every year. And so, we have a wall that's pretty full of a lot of them, and it was getting hard to figure out how to hang them. So, we were happy when they switched to this, where you only really get one every ten years and you add the medallions on for the year.
Mary, I don't mind if we line the hallways with them.
I know.
That's just fine with me.
Yeah.
What a problem to have, right?
When you get, I know, but you know, they get to a point where you have a bunch of them and you can't see what years they are because some are, you know. We're happy with this. We like it. Thank you for asking.
Again, a good problem, Mary.
Yeah, right, right.
I didn't mean it was...
Well, congratulations, Mary, to you and to your team, your office. I'm sure that everybody has to feel proud, pride. I certainly do, and I know that these are rare awards. I know they're rare. I've been sitting here long enough to hear them and hear the background, and I know that when we get that budget and the financial report that they're in the front because it really does make such a huge difference, so.
And every year, they do make some suggestions and some strong suggestions about things that need to be changed, and so, in the case of the budget, we try to incorporate those changes ourselves. On the case of the popular report, Kathy was, you know, Kathy always asks for those and make sure, we make sure those get incorporated. And then, for the financial statements, we work with our auditors to make sure that the suggested changes do get incorporated.
Great. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Any other comments? Great way to start the meeting. Okay, so, we are at our item number seven, Northwestern Partnership, and I see our friends are all ready.
So, maybe I'll quickly give a little introduction, not that they can't introduce themselves, but these are our friends, our colleagues, and just terrific professionals from Northwestern University. We have Dave Davis, we have Kristen Perkins, we have Amy Pratt, and we have Nicole Pinkard. And I'm sure they'll kind of make clear their roles, but I want you to know that all four of these esteemed people, and I am not just saying that for the sake of introduction, are very closely connected with ETHS, and we have a close and ongoing relationship. It's not like they show up once a year for a board meeting, quite to the contrary. We're working with them constantly. And I suppose, Kristen, we turn it over to you first, or to Dave?
I'll speak first. Thank you. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Superintendent Witherspoon, for that very gracious introduction. We value this partnership as well. And I also want to thank Assistant Superintendents Marcus Campbell and Pete Beavis, my apologies. So, we here at Northwestern are truly fortunate to be located in the city of Evanston, and we believe that if the city of Evanston is stronger, Northwestern will remain strong and vibrant as well. And we remain that if Northwestern is stronger, that the city will be stronger too. So, during our presentation, which we'll try to move through pretty fast, we'll talk about the university's partnership commitment, we'll talk about our priorities and the progress to date. So, we are now in our seventh year of our partnership with District two oh two, which began under President Morty Shapiro as part of the Good Neighbor, Great University program. And since then, the partnership has expanded and grown from a focus on STEM programs to over one hundred partnerships that are supported by our partnership offices. And partnerships range from partnerships around school readiness or college readiness, my apologies, and affordability, to diversity and social consciousness, health and wellness, athletics, and many more. These efforts have defined our partnership as a national model on how a major research institution engages with its host community, and Northwestern's commitment to this partnership remains strong. And with the support from my office, Neighborhood and Community Relations, Northwestern Administration, as well as our School for Education and Social Policy, in partnership with the district, we are confident that we can continue to build on this success and that we can ensure that the young people here in Evanston have the tools, the resources, and the human capital that they need to fully maximize their potential and to be productive citizens here in Evanston. And so, we're excited about this partnership. As you said, Kristen is going to share a little bit more information, but we look forward to continuing this and understand the work that we've done to this day, what it will mean, so.
Thank you, Dave. So, as I continue, Dave talked a little bit about the history of the partnership office that we're in year seven of our formal partnership. When we started, because this was such a unique model in the university-high-school relationship in a unique way, we started with this focus on STEM in the beginning, and then around year five, we started to take a step back and say, okay, we've got a lot of things going on, a lot of initiatives that have come up, some of them a mix of organic, coming from different directions, students, parents, teachers at both Northwestern and ETHS, and then also these strategic, ongoing, depthful collaborations. And so, we started to then talk about the work in terms of four distinct priorities: diversity in STEM pathways, integrating arts and design into STEM, in other words, STEAM, college access and career awareness, and then diversity, identity, and social consciousness. As we go through each of these priorities, I'll give some quick examples, highlights that we're proud of from the last year. I understand you've seen now, you know, the lengthy report, which I will not go over in its entirety, but you can feel free to reach out to any of us with further questions. The last point that I wanted to make is that we always strive to, in these priorities and in the work, to make sure that we are fully aligned with the goals and following the goals and needs that District two oh two outlines. That comes from administration, that comes from the district goals that you have set as well, and we want to make sure that that's first and foremost. So, with priority number one, diversity in the STEM pipeline, seen here, and we've talked about before as I presented for the board, this is year six of our Women in STEM program. So, this is a group of high school young women together with ETHS staff, and we were at Oakton Futures Unlimited Day. Oakton has put on this event for a number of years. This year, they did one explicitly for District sixty-five, so there were over, our count was between four hundred and four hundred and fifty, District sixty-five eighth-grade girls at this day that was created for them. We had Northwestern students and ETHS folks who were leading breakout sessions throughout the day. There were panel discussions. This example is one of the ways that Women in STEM has grown to a lot of different initiatives, both contributing to the conversations that led to the women's section of Intro Engineering Design, two sections now this year, the girls-only section of Women in Computing. We have Northwestern student groups, Society of Women Engineers, Women in Computing that work with girls who code, she is code, and knew this year as, with Dr. Pinkard's work, she has grant funding for her Digital Divas program to hire some of the ETHS students as mentors for District sixty-five girls. So, I wanted to highlight this quick example of how Women in STEM has grown over time. With priority number two, with STEAM, Integrating Arts and Design, another long-term partnership that has grown in really great ways is the Annual Scientific Images Exhibition. There's a group at Northwestern, Science and Society, that had put this on, this annual exhibit with Northwestern scientists and engineers who present their scientific work as an art piece, and then we host this exhibition, the gallery opening here at ETHS every year. The first couple of years, it was just showcasing the Northwestern work, and over time, we started to work with the AP Drawing and Painting teachers and the AP three-D Studio Art teachers, where the ETHS students now get advanced copies of the winning artistic images, and then they do an artistic interpretation of the scientific image. The really great moments are when those ETHS student artists get to meet the Northwestern STEM slash artist that they base their work on and have really fantastic conversations that flow from there. We were particularly proud of our three ETHS winners, all members of WISTEM this year, and then one other Northwestern image submission that was one of the winning submissions was actually, it was co-produced by a Northwestern graduate student and an ETHS high school student who was doing a summer internship in that Northwestern lab. So, it was a joint submission, and that was a really exciting development this year. With priority three, College Access and Career Awareness, we have a couple of photos here that highlight just some of the many ways that we help to support this. Again, I want to note that this collaboration is never about an admissions pipeline. There are a lot of university-high-school partnerships around the country that center on an admissions pipeline, but equity is something that, and equity of access to resources was important to both Northwestern and ETHS in developing this partnership. So, we want to find ways that we can support and collaborate with students no matter what their post-secondary plans are. And for those students that find their good fit at Northwestern, we're excited when that happens, but we like to help students see the range of possibilities and think about how we can utilize Northwestern resources in order to do that. So, on the left, we have Dr. Charles Whitaker, who is the interim dean of Madill School of Journalism. We have a Madill Guest Speaker Series. He's speaking to the journalism courses here at ETHS. He was our inaugural speaker this year. And then, to the middle and the right photo are students who are down at Shirley Ryan Ability Lab, which was formerly the Chicago Rehabilitation Institute, and the Shirley Ryan Ability Lab hosts every year a career day around biomechanics, helping students from anatomy and the health science career courses here at ETHS, as well as some other Chicago-area schools that join them to think about and get exposure to a broader range, broad range of career possibilities. We also work with Kellogg Connections, we have Humanities Days, we have college access mentorship programs as well that are part of this Priority Three collaboration. And then, the last one, where I wanted to spend just a little bit more time, was something that we're particularly excited, proud of, that we launched this year after a couple years where things, you know, as things were brewing and coming together, and that one that we know will continue. So, priority four is a little bit different, Identity, Diversity, and Social Consciousness. And this particular priority is one where Northwestern benefits in so many ways from this partnership. District two oh two is a trailblazer and a leader in equity work around the country, and we recognize that, and we are engaging in this work, supporting the summits that are part of the Social Consciousness series, you know, engaging, bringing ETHS faculty over to Northwestern for, as guest speakers, as teaching courses. We are looking to learn best practices and engagement and change the culture at Northwestern in ways that are modeled after the amazing work that's done here at District two oh two. So, to that end, we, the original student equity summit here was the Black Male Summit, and we were able to, with some catalyst funding from the Martin Family Fund here in Evanston, and then some additional funding through the Dan Linsor Provost Grant for Diversity and Equity, we were able to launch a program called the Black Men Lead Initiative, and this was based off of, you know, having engaged in the work supporting the Black Male Summit and now the Black Student Summits here at ETHS. As in two thousand and sixteen, Northwestern published a final report on the African-American black student experience. And in reading through this report, together with my colleagues and with Dr. Campbell, Dr. Pinkard, and Alan Anderson, who was previously in Dave's role, we saw a lot of parallels between the conversations that were happening here with the student summits and then the conversations that were happening at Northwestern. But in the Northwestern Student Experience Report, there was this sense of, you know, feeling isolated, not feeling, you know, feeling like they were the only ones in a predominantly white institution, and really this longing for a sense of community. So, we talked about what could happen and what might the possibilities be if we could connect our, the students here at ETHS together with our Northwestern students to have some conversations. So, with, together with this funding, we had a group of ETHS students and ETHS students, juniors and seniors, Northwestern undergrads, Northwestern graduate students, ETHS staff members, and come together in a series of Saturday workshops. And what they ended up doing after this series of Saturdays was planning a two-day convening that we hosted at Northwestern in December. There was a Friday night dinner gathering that was about breaking bread, setting, developing relationships, setting some community norms, and getting to know each other, and then an all-day Saturday conference that was facilitated by, together, the Northwestern students together with the ETHS high school students. Some of those sessions from that, the, I'm sorry, excuse me, the overall theme of the two-day conference was redefining black masculinity. I'm talking about what that had meant, what that meant to them, and then how they could, you know, come together as a community and start to think about changes that they might want to see. Some of the breakout sessions included mental health in black men, hip-hop and masculinity, black male identity and sexuality, black politics and consciousness. Follow-up plans, we met actually just this past Saturday morning to debrief with the Northwestern students and the ETHS students, and the feedback was just absolutely tremendous. These things that we had hoped for, the potential that we could see with the synergy of bringing students together across, you know, multiple generations and different student levels for those conversations. The synergy that we hoped for, we heard back, both in the evaluations, the participant evaluations from the conference itself, and then also in the debrief discussions with the students. Included in follow-up plans are really connected with one particular undergraduate student group called The Collective, which meets on a weekly basis, but on a monthly basis for the rest of the school year, they're inviting ETHS students to engage with them, talking about a series of events, possibly movie screenings. Each of the participants at the conference got one of three books that we, that they had, the planning committee had chosen, and so, there are book discussions that are scheduled as part of this ongoing, as part of this ongoing collaboration. They also want to make the conference an annual event. I got an email from a young woman at Northwestern who runs, The Collective is the black male student organization, there is a black female student organization, and she reached out to me and said, hey, I heard about this, and how can we get involved and talk more? So, we'll start to see where that can go as well. And then, further, furthermore, there are two of the undergraduate students and one of the graduate students who are going to continue to work with Dr. Pinkard over the course of this winter and spring quarter throughout the rest of this academic year in order to document the impact and connect that to best practices, talk about publishing some of that work as well. This last slide, we leave in here every year because it's important, and I won't necessarily go through each of these, but we always find that it's important to end with thinking about what are the keys to success? Why does this partnership function so well? And what are sort of the best practices as we've embarked on this unique journey together, the university and District two oh two? What have we learned along the way as we travel and talk to universities around the country who are interested in this work? These are the key points that we refer back to and lessons learned, and we have presented joint with ETHS administration about these things. So, we'll end there. Any questions?
Just want to say thank you for the presentation and the commitment and the partnerships. It's really just so exciting, and I keep going through the list of partnerships and then seeing something that I haven't seen before, and I thought, I thought I looked at that. So, and then realizing how much I missed, you know, like, oh, I missed that event. But just so, so much, so we are the beneficiaries, and so, we appreciate you as well and all the work you've done and how much you've committed to our school.
Well, we want to make sure that we are extremely clear that Northwestern benefits as well. What makes this partnership so effective is those win-wins. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, Board, questions, comments, anybody?
Terrific.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. All right, where's my agenda? Okay, so, next on our agenda is the report on student athletics.
And that would be our athletic director, Chris Levatino. As you know, Chris comes each year with an annual report, and as you'll once again hear as he talks, it becomes real clear how important our student athletic programs are to our school. They're obviously hugely important to our athletes and to the many, many students who participate, but to be honest, they're important to all of us, even if we're not members of athletic teams. If any of you were at the Nutrure game on Friday night where we had a doubleheader against boys and then a girls' basketball, it was a, and this happens all the time, by the way, a true student and community gathering. I mean, it was just a slice of Americana, and I mean, that gym was packed from stem to stern, from floor to ceiling, and the enthusiasm and the wild kit pride was so huge. And so, while we had five players plus their other teammates on the floor, we had thousands of wild kits there sharing in that pride. So, I just want to, again, point out that our athletic program functions on many, many important levels here at ETHS. And with that, Mr. Levatino.
Thank you very much, Dr. Witherspoon. It's great to be here, presenting to you guys this year. A little bit late in the year, so that always feels weird to talk about last year in January of two thousand and nineteen, but we had a really wonderful year. It was an outstanding year from all regards of athletic competition, academic achievement, and participation, as well as community involvement. And so, it is definitely my pleasure to present to you guys this report. I know we don't spend too much time on how we did in the pool and on the court, but it was a great year athletically, capped off by our boys' swimming and diving program winning the first-ever IHSA combined state championship. Thanks in part to Aaron Holtz-Mueller, who finished third place in the Athletes with Disabilities four different events, and then Harrell Annalick, who finished second in diving, among others. And that was fun, and I got to jump in the pool to cap it off. I had wanted to do that. I've seen that for thirteen years, the coaches and athletic directors jumping in the pool, and I said, someday I'll get to do that. So, that was a lot of fun. Boys' basketball, obviously finishing third place in the state, was a great event, and again, Dr. Witherspoon talked about community involvement. It was wonderful to see so much of our community galvanize around that program during the playoffs and their run. It was awesome. And Yeva Michelin had an unbelievable year last year. She won the state championship in an event that we've never won it in, and that says a lot in girls' track and field because we've won eight or seven team-state championships in girls' track and field. And she found a way to win an event at state that's never been done before, and that was the half-mile. And then Jonathan Wilburn did the same thing in boys' track, another legendary program in the triple jump. Anastasia Goncharova won her second straight state runner-up finish in tennis, which had never done before because last year was the first time we'd ever finished second in state in tennis. So, that's a mark for many girls in years to come to try to achieve. As I mentioned, Harrell finished second in diving. And then, Yeva won state runner-up also in cross-country, and the one thing I forgot in there, she also won it in the mile. She finished second in the mile and actually broke the IHSA record for the mile run. Unfortunately, the person who beat her also broke it that year, so it was pretty incredible. I think that record had stood for almost thirty years. So, it was, boys' water polo, boys' soccer, advanced the Elite Eight. For boys' water polo, that meant going downstate, which is the first time they had done that since two thousand and five. And then, we had five different teams win conference championships. We also had, you know, a wonderful breakout year for boys' bowling. Jake Rubin made it downstate, which is the first time that's ever happened. So, it's just, it was fun to see a lot of different sports achieve success last... uh, achieve success, um, last year. Um, but one of the most exciting things and most, uh, gratifying and fulfilling, uh, things of all was, as you all recall, last year at the beginning of the school year, um, we made a somewhat difficult decision, uh, to eliminate the 2.0 GPA requirement for athletics. Um, and the rationale behind that was, we've recognized really through these reports, uh, for the last, I don't know how many years, that students that are involved in athletics do better in school, period. And the idea was, well, why are we going to prohibit the kids that are struggling the most from getting that, what I feel is an academic intervention? And so, you know, I, I will say, you know, there was a question mark, well, what's going to happen with our average, our GPA average? It's been so great. It's always been consistently 3.53, just about every year. And you can see the numbers, you know, speak for themselves, a 3.71 and a 3.67 semester average, uh, for the students that are involved in athletics. Just, I mean, it, it cracked this, the standard of 3.53. Um, it was just, it was awesome to see. It was really, um, exciting to know that, um, that sometimes when you get rid of some requirements and restrictions and barriers, kids actually achieve more. Um, so, so that was neat, and that is the highest GPA that we have on record since we've been calculating it. Uh, 100% of our varsity teams had GPAs over 3.0, and, uh, 83% of them with a, uh, 3.5 or better. Uh, and then also just under half had above a 4.0 team GPA. It's really, really significant. Um, and then, I think most importantly, across every racial subgroup, um, except one, and that is Native American, uh, who only had one student athlete represented, student athletes earn significantly higher semester GPAs than non-student athletes. And I use the second semester average, uh, obviously that was the most significant, but the first semester was pretty good too. But you can look at the differential there between the students that, uh, are involved in athletics by subgroup versus, uh, those that are not. And, um, our Latino population, almost a full grade point higher, uh, when they're involved in sports. Um, so, uh, that's really encouraging news, um, but I tell you, it, more than anything, it just, it motivates, uh, me to try to figure out, how do we get more of our students of color involved in athletics, um, especially in some of those sports that are, um, traditionally white sports at our school and throughout the nation? Uh, we've got to really try to figure out how we get kids involved earlier into those sports because there's a lot of barriers to participation that happen before you even get to the high school. Um, so, but again, those, those numbers are extremely encouraging. Um, participation, uh, was also, um, at an all-time high last year. Uh, we had 1,373 unique participants, um, which in the last two years, it's over 10% growth. Um, seasonal participation, and the difference is, um, if you play in one sport, if you're, if you specialize in one sport, um, for seasonal participation, you're counted once. If you're a three-sport athlete, you'd be counted three times. Uh, so that's what those numbers mean. And our seasonal participation also hit an all-time high. With over 2,000 student athletes, we've never been above 2,000 before. Um, that's a 15% increase in the last two years, um, which if you compare the numbers up there, that means that we actually were growing multiple sport participation at the same time because you see a higher, uh, number of seasonal participants in terms of growth than, than, uh, unique participants. And female participation continues to grow. Um, we're a 12 and a half percent growth in the last two years, um, and specifically Latinas, uh, 20% increase. And I don't know if you remember from last year, that was, that was sort of my concern is that, that our Latina participation had not been great. Um, and so I, I was really pleased to see that growth, and hopefully we can continue to, to grow that even more each and every year. Um, so, great numbers there in terms of participation. Uh, I call this slide building bridges because it kind of condenses a lot of things, and they're all about how are we connecting with other people? Um, and first and foremost, I think we did a great job of, uh, continuing to, to connect with our future participation, our future, uh, student athletes here, our future kids. Uh, we run this program every year called the Middle School Multi-Sport Challenge. Uh, this past winter, we did it again. We had over 125 kids come to Evanston for a free half-day of sports that we provide, thanks to our coaches and our student athletes, um, where they run through a fall, winter and season, and spring season. Um, very close relationship with the Girls Play Sports program, um, and we always host the District 65 Track Meet every year, which brings thousands of, hundreds of kids, I think 700 kids over to the high school, um, and all their families. And then finally, you know, to, to provide them, make sure that those, those, uh, those barriers to participation, which often have to do a lot with finance, we provide $21,000 in financial aid to, to kids to be able to participate in summer camps. So anybody that, that wants to participate in the summer camp can, and we will always, uh, provide at least a 200, or up to $250 in financial aid. So those are some of the ways we build bridges with the, uh, the future Wild Kits. Um, then those that are going off to college, um, uh, we've got, uh, Joyce Anderson has done a remarkable job as our college-bound student athlete advisor. Um, we used to have between 25 and 30 kids that would go off and play sports in college, and for the last three years, we've averaged, averaged 50 seniors going off to play sports in college. So we've got 150 kids that are currently in college participating in athletics, which is awesome. Uh, and then finally, the, the, uh, maybe the, the most nerve-wracking, uh, um, program that we, that we did last year was to partner up with Northwestern and run, I think something like 26, 28 Big Ten volleyball and basketball contests at our school while doing everything else that we've already been doing. And, uh, it really went off without a hitch, and, uh, thanks to that partnership, um, and that, that rental agreement, um, that really helped to finance a lot of the improvements that we were able to make at, at Beardsy Gym, uh, most notably the, the video board that's now there. And so, so that was great. And it also helped, um, create good partnerships and friendships with the folks in their athletic department. Uh, we actually were just there today, uh, taking a look at their strength and conditioning facility in their new Walter Athletic Center, um, which is, is awesome, and we hope to improve our strength and conditioning center here, thanks to the ETHS Foundation. So, so that's another great bridge. Um, not to mention, you know, our continued partnership with the Kiwanis Club, uh, of Evanston and, uh, and District 65, as I mentioned before. Um, some of the future goals, um, you know, is, is to really work with, uh, the PE department. Um, they, thanks to you, you just passed a new course and, and program that they're going to be running next year, uh, for sport-specific training, and that's going to give, uh, student athletes, varsity student athletes, an opportunity to, to focus in on strengthening conditioning during the school day, uh, instead of taking up more time after school that might get in the way of doing homework and studying. Um, and, uh, you know, we're also looking to increase the number of coaches who are teachers. That's always going to be on my bullet point list, uh, as long as I'm here. It's great when you can have your coaches in the building working with kids and that they can stop in and see them during the day. Um, but we do have a large group that are outside the building, and, and we're going to keep working to try to figure out how we can connect them to our kids as well and our community. Um, trying to develop more leadership programs for our kids, um, not just, you know, the, the, the top 20 or 30, but, but all of our kids, I think, can, can learn and grow about, uh, around leadership through their involvement with athletics, and we just got to try to make our program stronger there. Um, I mentioned this earlier, but, you know, I really want to see an increase in participation of students of color in what I call traditionally white sports. Um, and the only way to do that is to try to create more exposure, uh, to those sports before they get to the high school. And that's difficult, to be quite frank with you guys, in your role as an athletic director at a high school, to try to figure out ways to do that before they get here. Um, that's really one of the things that Girls Play Sports is all about, and we're just going to have to try to figure out how we can do that, uh, for boys as well. Um, uh, the next bullet point is, is just really trying to, we, we did this a little bit last year, um, through our coaches, but implement student athlete workshops, uh, that educate varsity athletes on diversity awareness and gender violence. Um, last year, we really focused on the month of April, uh, to, we had a training for our coaches around that, and what we're looking at trying to do in the future is create, um, either a, um, a speaker series that addresses those issues, or smaller group sessions within programs where they can talk about, uh, those two specific issues and other issues throughout the year. Um, I just, you got, you've always brought up the issue of multiple sport participation to me at these meetings, and, um, it's something I'm very passionate about, and I want to see improve, obviously, with our program that we do over the winter. Um, but we just actually worked with, uh, with, uh, UP Metrics to come up with, uh, with some more research numbers on multiple sport participation at our school. I just got that report on Friday, but its numbers are amazing. The kids that are involved in one sport, their GPA is, is higher, but when they're involved in two sports, their actual GPA continues to go up, and their attendance at school continues to go up in the more and more sports they're involved in. So, we got to try to figure out how we get more kids involved in multiple sports here. Uh, and then finally, you know, just trying to figure out ways to promote our mission statement and pyramid of excellence and our core values. Um, we're doing a lot of wonderful things with the Entrance 3 renovation, beautifying this place, and, and trying to figure out ways we can embed sort of our values throughout, uh, the athletic wing, I think would be, uh, a wonderful, uh, goal to have for our facilities. So, that kind of wraps it up. Um, any questions?
Excellent report.
Thank you.
So, questions? Pat?
Um, thanks. That's a great report, Chris. Although, when I first started to read, I was a little confused because all those kids graduated last year. I'm like, wait, what happened? So, to your point that usually we get that a little earlier. Um, but I want, you know, so clearly the GPAs are a great outcome, and, and that's really exciting. I know that when we changed the, the 2.0 last year, one of the things we talked about when you presented to us was the academic support piece, and I was wondering if you could spend a minute, just kind of talking about what you're doing, how that's going? Are you linking to existing? Do you have some special things just for your athletes? Like, how is that working?
Sure. So, yeah, I can, I'd be happy to talk about that. Um, first off, what we did is we, um, Mike Brazawa, our Assistant AD, had, had always managed that program, um, the EAP program, as we had called it before, and, um, he did a great job. Um, but what we did is we created, uh, what we call the Academic Watchlist, and those were students that otherwise would have been ineligible to participate last year. They had below a 2.0. Some of them would have been in this EAP program that, that Mike ran, and some of them would have not, would have been completely disconnected from participation in sports. And we provided, um, a current teacher and a retired teacher as the new, um, advisors within that program, and, uh, they met after school on Mondays, uh, with the shortened day, and then also Wednesday, uh, after practice. So they had a 6:30 PM session, uh, till 7:45. And, um, and those academic advisors, uh, basically tried to coach them up, were more tutors to those students that were struggling. And, um, and, and that, that worked pretty well. But at the same time, um, I think the concern that, that some of, uh, of you had and that I certainly had was that, uh, that, that we would lose some accountability with kids and that they wouldn't be as, um, serious about school. They would see this as a free pass, for lack of a better term. And so one of the, the rigors that we, or the requirements, I guess, that we still continue to put in place is weekly checks on their GPA. And so if you are in this academic watch list and you have, uh, two Ds or Fs or more, then you're ineligible that next week. And so there's a, there is a, uh, an immediate requirement for that student athlete to, to improve their grades. Whereas in the past, if they were cut off from the program, they're, they're out for a whole season. And there was, there wasn't that sense of urgency to improve their grades. And, uh, and I think that's been successful. And, and there's some kids that, that had to learn the hard way, that were ineligible week after week after week after week. We didn't give up on them, the coaches didn't give up on them, and ultimately, they, they turned it around and improved their grades. And, and again, that's, that's really what that whole program's about. Um, for our freshmen specifically, we used to run a freshman study table, um, that was run through a particular teacher's classroom, and that basically meant that freshmen that were on study table week after week had to go get, uh, a study table support after school instead of going to practice. And to take advantage of some of our existing programs that we have here with the New Homework Center, that's been going on, I guess, for a year or two now, uh, up in the hub, um, they now go straight there. So they recognize that that's a, another center for them to go to throughout the year. And, uh, and that's been beneficial as well. So they manage that for us. Um, so overall, um, you know, I, I think we, um, I think we made good strides in, in, in the direction of, um, taking advantage of our existing structures and, and, and our coaching, um, what do we call it? Academic coaching stipends that we had, and, and, and support this new program in a way that would help our kids that were struggling even more, uh, do better academically.
Can I just talk about, I'm trying to clarify the, so, the students who were on, um, uh, on the academically ineligible, and then they would go week after week, and you said ultimately they turned it around, were they turning it around through academic resources that were specially available to them through the athletic department or through the general?
Uh, mostly through the general school, but, but, I mean, the one program that we had specifically for student athletes, um, was our Academic Watchlist Support Program, which is, they had to attend, uh, a support, a support either Monday right after school or Wednesday night right after practice. And it was one of the two. So besides that, everything else was carrots, for lack of a better term. It was, do you want to be eligible next week? Well, you got to start taking advantage of AM support. You got to go to Wild Kit Academy, you know?
Sorry, I just wanted to tie that down.
That's fine.
Mike?
So, Pat asked pretty much the same question I was going to ask, but I wanted to, you know, it, it would help to have some data. I mean, we were really concerned about this 2.0 thing. I know Jude Lade, who's not here tonight, was very concerned about it. And, uh, it, you know, I, I think anecdotally, I know that it was pretty successful because I'm kind of close to the, you know, athletic department and all that, and I kind of get that. And we heard that from you, that you feel like, you know, it was pretty successful. But it would be, I think, really helpful to look at the kids, because it's not a real big list. If we could look at the kids who would have otherwise been ineligible, and then see what their outcomes were.
Right.
Right? And then start to compare that to, in the past, although it's not perfect because every cohort's different, but compare that to what happened when kids were ineligible, and what did that group of kids look like a year later or two years later? You know, start to compile that. It's, you know, somebody has to figure out how to put that model together, you know?
Yeah.
And how to collect the data.
I, I, I think certainly we can evaluate and assess the kids that are going through that program.
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward. The difficulty is, uh, comparison to the kids that were ineligible before because you don't know what you don't know.
You may not, you may not have it, right. You don't, right. You may not have it, but, I mean, as we go forward, it would, I think it would be helpful to start collecting that and think about how we can prove with data how we're doing with this thing. Because sometimes the data, you know, you have a few good stories that get in your head, you know, and you watch a kid here and a kid there, and it's easy to lose sight of the overall picture in all the sports. I mean, it's a lot of kids, a lot of sports.
Right.
So, you know, it's just something to think about. I don't know.
No, I agree. Um, and so, what you're talking about is data specific to the, that, 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 that specific group of students. And I look at the data of how are we doing overall?
Yeah, and the overall looks great. The overall looks great, but, you know, what could be lost in there is a really good story.
Right.
That proves, look, we had, we changed this, these eligibility requirements, and these kids that are otherwise, you know, would have been lost to, who didn't do well, weren't doing well, did better. You know, we took a kid from, uh, you know, behind in his credits, uh, on a, you know, a 1, 1/8 grade point average, we took that kid, got caught up on the credits and has a 2.5 or a 3.0, you know, over the course of a year, year and a half. Those are real success stories, but, you know, to be able to collect that and see, you know, how that, how this is really working.
Yeah, I, I think this year will be easier for us to do that. Last year, we, we didn't implement until...
Yeah, I'm just thinking as we go forward, you know?
But, but I agree.
Ways to augment, you know, give you just more insight into, into what's really going on.
Definitely.
You know, something to think about.
Definitely. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, even if, even if you don't compare to previous, because I think that would be difficult to do, but it would be, yeah, because, yeah, we don't, we just, so, yeah, we, we don't want you to make up anything and, um, but it, but you've got some, I think, pretty hard, um, stories now, hard evidence now about how this is working, and, and I think it would be helpful. I would be interested in seeing what resources students are taking advantage of at the school. And I really like the idea that they're taking, that they're taking advantage, they're taking, they're, they're, they're taking advantage of resources available to everybody.
Right.
So, that's good, and, and that they're sometimes directed to those resources.
Absolutely.
So I think, I think that's, that's really good.
So I have one more.
Okay.
If I could just, one more thing I want to, uh, challenge you, I guess. I don't mean to make a lot of extra work for you, but this whole idea of, uh, multi-sport participation, uh, is something, you know, I've been interested in for a long time because there's some data and then a lot of anecdotal information that suggests that kids that, you know, do better. And you, you said you've discovered from an outside source that that, you know, that that's true, that there is data that supports this. And you said that, you know, we got to figure out, you know, how we're going to attract more kids, and, um, you know, I just, when you said that, I go, man, that's just such an uphill fight, because the trend for many, many years now has, as you know, has gone the other way.
Right.
Where coaches and, and, uh, club sports and other organizations have demanded more and more of a kid's time and encouraged. either explicitly, implicitly, or just sort of by innuendo, that encouraging one sport specialization, which we know is not necessarily in the best interest of the student athlete.
Correct.
So, you know, I would challenge you to sit down with, you know, your, your coaches, you know, the, the counselors, psychologists, and make a plan. Like, how are we gonna, can we buck this trend? You know, can we at E T H S do this and be different? And if so, then how to go about building that over a lot of years? Because that's one of those things where you're not gonna change that overnight. That's gonna have to take a sustained effort and become part of the culture here. And that's gonna take a long time.
You, you gotta make it part of the culture of our community.
Right.
More than anything. And, and so, you gotta start with second, third, fourth, fifth graders. You gotta, you work with the youth sports programs in, in Evanston. And, uh, unfortunately, some of those are, some of those are, are, uh, financial-based models where it's in their best interest to have kids playing their sport year-round because they have full-time salaries to, to support. And so, they're not as interested in, in finding those opportunities. But that's, but I completely agree with you. That is a, that is a, an absolute goal of ours, is to try to figure out how do we, how do we crack that?
That's a tough one, but, yeah, it's worth working on.
Definitely.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
So, similar, I was, I was, and I've asked this before, wondering about some of those traditionally white sports. And you talked about the barriers. I understand the barriers, but how do we do this? What kind of, you know, any, any suggestions? Because I've, I've not, I've not heard what, what we can, what we do or what we can do.
Yeah, I mean, so, so the, the biggest barriers are the cost of participation in youth sports. And there's a ton of articles and research done about that. And, um, and if you're not, if you're not swimming since age four or you're not playing soccer, uh, on a club program, um, and all of a sudden you show up at Evanston Township High School or any strong athletic program as a freshman, I don't care, no disrespect to what Mark just said, I don't care what we do just here at Evanston High School.
Yes.
You're, you're gonna, you're gonna either get cut from the team or experience failure that will make you not wanna continue to participate. Um, and so, we've gotta figure out how do we get kids involved in sports earlier? So, they can have more success early, so they can be more successful when they get here, to feel more comfortable playing those particular sports. And, um, I mean, that's, that's, that's one of the major issues, I feel like, in, in sports across America today. And I think, I, I remember Dr. Witherspoon saying this about, um, achievement gap, if not Evanston, where? Like, we're, we're perfectly positioned to try to figure out how to do that. And I do feel like we have pretty good relationships with most of the youth sports programs here in Evanston. Um, and, uh, and again, how do we do it? I, honestly, I think the, the girls play sports model that we follow with girls is a pretty good one, is trying to create free opportunities for kids early on. It's just, it's just not enough. Because you gotta get them into the more serious side of the sport instead of just sort of introductory side of sports. And so, that's just building partnerships with those youth sports programs again.
I mean, I'm thinking, but this is Evanston.
Yeah, right.
And this is E T H S. And, and we, it, that sounds like something that we would go for.
Yeah.
As a, as a district that we would, we would do.
You gotta figure out the, how to, to reduce the economic barrier and the transportation barrier is another huge one.
Yes.
It really is gigantic.
Yes.
And parents' inability to get kids to their programs, uh, because it, it conflicts with work schedules a lot of times. Um, or they don't see, certain communities, they don't see the relevance of playing sport.
Right.
Get a job and get to school, but sports is a hobby in a lot of cases. They don't see the importance of, of how that translates to academic success. So, another piece of it is probably just better education. Um, and show them, you know, all these numbers that I shared with you guys tonight, is figuring out ways to share that across the community so that parents really realize it's not about playing sports, it's about, it's about being connected to your school and doing better academically. And sports are a great bridge to do that.
Or hearing options that, you know, folks don't always know that options are out there and available. So, maybe, you know, I'm sure there, there are multiple ways to go at this.
Yeah. And I think you have to go all of those ways at the same time.
At the same time. Do everything at once.
Yeah. So, it's, um, it's definitely, um, a big, a big topic of, uh, of my focus throughout the year. Just trying to figure out how we can do that. So, we'll continue to do that.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Really good to see you.
Good to see you as well. Thanks.
All right. So, next on the agenda is the report on the joint reading goal at our school, E T H S.
Yes, and, uh, so, Scott Bramley and Kiwanah Brown are here, uh, and, uh, they certainly are not strangers to this board. Uh, but we're real glad that they can come this evening and talk specifically about, uh, E T H S's, uh, reading program, uh, and, uh, the challenges and the ways we've been addressing them and the successes as well as the, uh, the needs for, uh, future work. So, I'll turn it over to, to a U.
Well, thank you, everyone. Uh, as Dr. Witherspoon said, uh, Ms. Brown and I are here this evening to give you a little bit of an update on some of the work that we've been doing toward our joint literacy goal. And, uh, a little bit of an update, kind of a snapshot, as we talked about at the joint board meeting in October, providing a little bit of a snapshot of how our students are doing since we've adopted this goal. And so, first of all, I just wanna thank the board and the administration, not only for the time this evening, but also for the consistent commitment to helping our students, um, across the board. One of the ways in which that happens is through our work with reading. However, if I have the benefit, we have the benefit of being the, the, the third presentation tonight. But something I heard, a theme running throughout all the reports, is the opportunity for school connectedness and the amount of resources and partnerships we're putting forward to allow all of our students to be able to succeed and to have opportunities. And so, I think that's something that's gonna be consistent in our report as well, as you'll see. I wanted to start out just by reminding everyone, uh, as well as, uh, allowing the community to see once again what the joint literacy goal was that was adopted in twenty fourteen. Uh, thank you for your time and efforts to read the report. I know it was a little lengthy. Um, and I know especially on an evening when you have three reports, that's a pretty big packet. Uh, from personal experience, I know that. But, uh, the joint literacy goal really talked about both districts committing to, uh, providing all students the opportunity to be proficient readers before they leave the high school. So, before they leave the districts, um, our community making sure that all students are proficient readers. And one of the things that we've yet to do, which I hope to do tonight, uh, and, uh, with Ms. Brown, is to provide a little bit of a snapshot of where we're at. So, in the, in the report, you saw some data on incoming freshman students. You also saw some growth data for all of our students since we've been using our star reading assessment. And then you've also have some information about how we're working, uh, with our teachers, with our students, uh, some of our programs and partnerships that we're trying to provide. So, the scope of the report this evening is really on some of those snapshots. And so, the challenge with the reading report is that we really could be here for six hours on so many different, uh, levels and so many different aspects of reading and literacy and how we're working toward it. So, I think one of the things that I'm trying to keep in mind is, uh, what can we provide ongoing for the board to be able to track progress toward this goal? And what does that look like moving forward after we give a little bit of this overview tonight? So, as the joint goal reads here, the part that we focused on in the report was really the proficient readers. So, one of the aspects of the report that you read gave a snapshot of the students incoming freshman ninth graders for the past five years, their star grade equivalence. What I'm displaying right now for the community and for you is the overall, all students, those five, that five-year trend, star percentage at grade equivalent. And so, for the purposes of setting a benchmark, uh, we looked at an eight point three, which is the third month of the eighth grade year or higher as the benchmark for grade equivalent. Uh, when we use the star assessment, we looked at our grade equivalents. I think that's the easiest way to really digest is somebody reading proficiently or not. And so, a, a little bit of an easier measure than percentile ranks or things that maybe need a little more interpretation. So, if you look at the grade equivalent, we see a trend here. And as the report stated, we have an average percentage of students entering the high school in ninth grade, around fifty-nine percent of our students are at grade equivalent. And so, as an overall number, um, that's, that's pretty alarming to me. Uh, as someone whose daily work is trying to focus on, uh, helping students once they are in our high school, uh, and also figuring out ways that we can support the work of our colleagues in District sixty-five and across the community, uh, with our, with our community efforts to help students with literacy and with reading. And so, um, one thing that I wanna highlight on this slide as well is that at the joint evaluation, uh, sorry. My entire life is evaluations these days, if you don't know. Um, I do several observations, so sorry about that. Uh, at the joint, uh, board meeting, the joint literacy goal was, uh, talked about. And one of the conversations that emerged was the need to see, you know, map data together with star data. Can we put everything on one slide and put it together? And what does it tell us? Um, i- is there any predictive ability that we have when we look at the map? Even though we have two different measures and two different assessments, can we at least see if there's some predictive ability of the data that we're receiving? And, uh, you know, as I tried to summarize, as we tried to summarize a little bit in the report, um, when I look at the slide, my takeaway, not to speak for you, but for myself personally, I don't see a lot of predictive ability when it comes to the fact that we have different analytics and different assessments, assessing somewhat similar literacy domains and reading domains, but different, um, ways in which the data are interpreted and different ways in which they're presented. And so, what's consistent for us, as we've looked over the past few years, this demonstrates, uh, map percentile rank versus our star grade equivalent. That was done purposely because we don't use the percentile rank in star for our, our, our discussions and our response to our students' needs. As I talked about, we try to look more at that grade equivalent, it's a little more easy to understand, a little more responsive. But when we look at star percentile ranks versus map percentile ranks, we see the same difference. So, it's the same approximately twenty percent difference, uh, uh, you know, that we see for students. So, for the, for, for a student who might score coming in, uh, to ninth grade with a sixty, sixtieth percentile on the map, we're, we're approximately the fortieth to forty-fifth percentile on the star for percentile rank. So, this gap in terms of what's being measured and what's being presented and, and the, the takeaway that you might have looking at the different measures, it persists. So, this shows it between grade equivalent and percentile rank, but it persists when we look at the percentile ranks together. So, for me, you know, that's, that's, that's our great challenge, uh, in terms of our overall data, is how do we, how do we continue to measure a joint goal with two different measures? And we've talked about this, uh, several times, uh, and I know that it's coming up, uh, at the joint, uh, committee meeting on Wednesday in, in anticipation for our joint board meeting moving forward, uh, later on this year in February. But I think that's something that we need to, to really think about as we continue to work toward, um, our efforts with District sixty-five in, uh, support of our joint literacy goal. One, one of the other comments and questions that was made at the last joint board meeting was, is the, is the goal still relevant? Is it the right goal? Should we continue to pursue this goal? And I think, uh, in that evening, it was a little challenging to answer, but I think it's reading through the, the, the report tonight and looking at what we're seeing in our data, I would say that obviously, the goal is still something we need to be working toward. It's something that is extremely important and we have a lot of work to do. But I think one of the things we might need to reconsider or continue to evaluate is how are we measuring it? And what targets are we setting? And what benchmarks can we set jointly if we have a joint measure? So, those are some of the things that I hope, you know, we'll look forward to, um, moving forward. In the report, this is disaggregated by some of our racial subgroups that we typically, uh, present on, that you can see. And I think, you know, as I said, there's still work to be done. Uh, we are not seeing, we're, we're seeing percentiles, or percentages of students at grade equivalent coming in for our Latinx and our black African-American community, um, students who identify in those racial groups even lower than this. And that's a, that's a persistent trend that we see with our joint achievement reports, uh, and the annual achievement reports, the last two cohorts that were presented a few months ago. So, again, we still have work to do, even though we're going to have a little bit of some success when we look at growth, which I think is important. So, in the report, you saw, uh, growth analysis. Uh, the charts were really large, and so, they were put in the appendix for that reason. But one of the things that I did was actually took the overall students from our school year twenty fourteen fifteen through our school year twenty seventeen eighteen and actually tried to show, um, the average percent of, uh, students either reading at grade level equivalent or meeting their growth targets, uh, for each of those years. And so, you can see we hover approximately around an eighty-four percent, um, average of our students either reading at their grade level equivalent or meeting expected growth. One of the things I really wanted to highlight tonight is why we look at both? Why do we look at the growth piece as well as the, the percentage reading at grade equivalent? I think because we, as a school district, we, we want to make sure that we're focusing on how we can support students to grow and develop with their reading. And s- seeing students who are entering the high school, um, as you saw, that fifty-nine percent of our students not reading at grade level as measured by star, well, then what are we doing once students are here with us? And that's an important piece. Although the joint goal, those students are in fourth grade right now, since we adopted in twenty fourteen, we don't have that longitudinal data. We know that every year that we've taken, um, steps to work toward this goal, we have students here at the high school that we still need to support and serve. And so, as we look at that, we have, uh, a pretty good trend overall. But as the report stated, the trend does not persist for students who identify as black or, um, La- Latinx, as we've reported. And so, I think the overall number is showing a good, uh, great growth story. We have students, like I said, approximately eighty-four percent of our students either reading at grade level or meeting their growth targets. But that's an overall number.
And Scott, would you explain, is that growth target just pulled out of thin air?
Uh, no. Uh, yeah, so, for those of you who don't have the benefit of the report, uh, thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. So, the growth target is set by, uh, the, the analytics that, that the star assessment does to really look at, um, what's known as a student growth percentile. And that takes students who are at a certain R I T score, essentially, or a certain score on the assessment, their scale score, and looks at, okay, for the population of students who scored in this range, what would be expected growth for them? And overall, for the whole district, what they look at is, um, you know, if we're making approximately forty points of growth or more, between forty and fifty, you're about at the, at the, you know, you're making about fifty percent growth. Uh, so, what they look at is, you know, what would be a good number that most students, when you look at all the student growth percentiles, what are students really, uh, you know, performing at in terms of meeting growth, demonstrating that they've grown, that they have moved in terms of their reading proficiency? And the number is between forty and fifty, um, as a, as a student growth percentile. So, we use the forty as the benchmark to say students are making expected growth. Okay?
Um, so, thank you, Scott. So, as we look at different opportunities to insert literacy into every aspect of life here at E T H S, um, we have a couple of highlights that we wanted to share with you. I had to work on my hand-eye coordination today. One is flexible grouping. So, the first thing that, um, it's in the report, but one thing that we wanted to, um, talk about is our flexible grouping, which is a system that we've used to be more responsive to student needs. Um, it looks at instruction from a growth and not a deficit model. So, we're able to actually look at where students are, um, and to place them in classes according to that. So, there's three different tiers of the, of the flexible grouping class, um, and it's offered two periods of the day. So, as students show the need, they move up or back according to whatever their specific student individualized instructional needs are. And that's actually been showing a lot of, um, a lot of success with our students. Um, and this is one of the areas where we're really starting to see, um, students growing, um, and moving the needle, um, as far as their student growth percentiles are concerned because they're actually getting individualized, very explicit individualized instruction that focuses on their needs, where they are. And teachers are actually being more responsive to that because they're able to actually outline where students need the most help and actually teach them where they, where they. and actually teach them where they, where they need the most help. The other is standards-based or standards-reference grading, which is the model that we use for the flexible grouping course. So we don't assign grades. Students are, they are graded based on a, a point scale, one, two, three, and four. And the point scale is, again, another way for students to be able to be, to, to, to make goals. They have a goal-setting opportunities where they can actually make their own goals for the course as long, as well as have conversations with their instructor so that they know where they are, they know where they need extra support, and the instructor, as well as the student, is able to align the student's goals as well as the student's needs so that they're more successful in the course because they actually take more ownership for what they need and how they expect to get there. Another is discovering success through music. So this is a course that students can elect to take for, in place of their FASH. And what we're really seeing with this course is a lot of success in many areas. So this course actually comes from some research that we did with Dr. Nina Kraus from Northwestern. And we looked at the success through music as well as literacy. And we, we saw how students were growing when they had up to two years of music in a literacy-rich course. So this course, like we said, we've seen a lot of success with. Students overall in these courses, we see lower referrals, we see less truancy. Students are actually, you know, present to school more often, the, the rate of attendance is higher for this course. And we see students who are more willing to become leaders. And this is one of the strengths of the course. It's, it uses the STAR's model, which is students taking awe-inspiring roles to success. So it's a leadership kind of model where students who are normally seen in not-so-positive lights are actually put into leadership roles where they are not only growing in literacy, but also in their desire and in their leadership abilities. The other is the sophomore reading course. So we're in our second year of this course. And this year, we actually had more students who wanted to take the course than we had faces for. So it's actually one of the courses that we, you know, weren't sure how it would work out the first year. But we've seen a lot of success in it overall. We've seen a lot of success in especially our African-American male students. Overall, science scores, biology scores have, I mean, they, it's amazing how they've grown. And the students are really proactive in this course as well, as well as the teachers. The teachers are amazing for this course, too. So this one is, and it's taught with the reading teacher as well as the biology teach, biology teacher, but it is, it is, the kids love it. And I know it probably has a lot to do with the, the teachers as well as the course, but the students are really showing a lot of success in this course that we're really proud of. Other highlights are the Northeastern Illinois University ETHS Reading Teacher Endorsement and Masters Program. So we currently have ten teachers, ten ETHS teachers who are enrolled in this program. There's four English teachers, three sped, two science, and one para who has a background in teaching, who are almost at the completion of this course after the summer, makes me so happy. That is, they're doing wonderful. And I, I also teach several of the courses, too, so I kinda, you know, have personal experience with, with their success. But it's actually been amazing to see them go through this course, these courses. And as we try to encourage more ETHS teachers to actually become part of the program, we offer several benefits for teachers, as you know. So we're just really looking to encourage more teachers to actually become part of the program, as we said. And one of the things that we are developing as part of this course that we've also invited District 65 as well as now to participate with, as part of the, the course, they don't have the incentives, of course, but they are able to take the cohort here at ETHS with our teachers. But one of the things that we offer, or we, we will offer in the summer, starting, is the literacy lab. And the literacy lab is the clinic experience for the teachers in the cohort. But the wonderful thing about the literacy lab is one-on-one, it's one-on-one with the student. And we're looking to not only incorporate ETHS students, but also District 65 students starting in the summer to work with them. So they will be diagnosed one-on-one by a teacher who will soon become a certified reading specialist or endorsed reading teacher. And then have one-to-one instruction that's based upon the student's specific needs. So we're expecting to see growth, research-based programs as well as research-based strategies that the, the teachers will incorporate with the students, working one-on-one with them. Very excited about that, as we continue that throughout the year as well. It's, it will become a tier-three intervention. And we're looking at several models for that for the fall in which we can hopefully implement it. You know, I, I, I would hope that we could do it nine periods of the day, but as I said, we're looking at several models for that. But I, I'm positive that it would be just a, a wonderful outcome for that, especially working with our, our students who, who need the tier-three interventions. Another highlight is the Drop Everything and Read, which we do once a month for twenty minutes a, a day on the day that we do the deer. And that is actually taken off, too. Last year, we had a lot of pushback, but this year, I'm actually seeing more students who are, who, they email me. They're like, why can't we do this twice a week? Why can't we do this more than once a month? And it's, it's great to have that feedback from, from adults, but it's even better to have that feedback from students who actually understand the importance about, you know, reading for pleasure, who actually want to read for pleasure. And then having our administrative team actually go into classes and sit and read with classes for twenty minutes so that it, you know, so that everybody sees it and know that it's not just a thing, it's not just a fad, it's not just a phase, that it's actually something that's important and that our school is actually, you know, invested in having students do and having staff do. And then lastly, the Wildcat Engineering and Food Adventure Summer Camps. And that's for rising sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. And this is a course that, it's mostly built around engineering. And then there's some food. They, they learn how to cook, prepare meals and, you know, talk about recipes and things like that. But it's also a course in which there's literacy infused in, and not just in the food adventures or the engineering, but there's also, they teach them how to look at different strategies for literacy that they use while they're, you know, looking at recipes and while they're, you know, considering the, the engineering aspect. So this is, I, I think this is a wonderful course as well for incoming, eventually incoming students as we look at our joint literacy goal. And especially the fact that we have teachers who collaborate from both 65 and 202 working together to infuse literacy into these courses so that students also understand the importance of literacy across disciplines.
I think on that, on the summer camps, the nice thing is that we work very closely with District 65 to identify target population of students who they're seeing in their achievement results and reports that they, that they analyze to see which students would most benefit from this opportunity so that we're intervening and supporting earlier than when students come. So this is one of the things from our joint work that we, that we have done for the past few years. We also have the benefit of, of a donor who has supported this from the community, who hopes to remain anonymous, I won't identify. But that work and, and advocacy and looking at things like Create a Career and a Joint Literacy Goal that speak to the community of some of the work that we're trying to do, and we have members of our community trying to back that as well financially so that we can provide these opportunities. I think that's been very beneficial. And so some of the things that we, we would look to do in the future is actually, some of these things are pretty, pretty much in their infancy when you think about being able to gather data and report trends and things like that. So in the, in the coming years and coming months, you know, like as we do reports to be able to provide you a little more data around these opportunities as we track success and progress in relation to our goal. But one of the things, you know, I just want to close up with before we get to questions and comments is just that there was a lot of, there were a lot of charts, a lot of figures, a pretty huge table in the report to digest. And so, obviously, I didn't take us through every single slide and every single figure, but I think some things that really stand out that I want to, you know, summarize as well again are really the, the focus on our incoming students, where they're at in relation to grade equivalent as a measure of reading proficiency. And that's something that we need to continue to work on with our, with our feeder district. And then as we look at reading growth, again, overall, we show, we show positive signs with growth. It is, it is inherently more challenging to support the reading development of students as they progress in age. And so, you know, there are ways to do it and there, and they include intensive supports and more time with support and additional supports that are more, you know, defined and individualized. And those are some of the things that we've been trying to do. So just one really clear example that I wanted to elevate again from the report is that when, when we looked at the trends, the last time we reported in 2016, we looked at the trends of incoming students who are being served by our most intensive reading support, we determined that we needed to do something different with that course. We could no longer go along with, this is a reading skills class for all students with this wide range of needs. And by using flexible grouping, which is largely used in elementary and middle school settings, but to use that model, to schedule those courses at the same time in the day, have teachers dedicated to the same time of the day, to be able to have students drive the decision-making of what course and which skills they'd be working on, has been tremendously transformational. And I think the, the biggest thing is that we've been able to go from a class that used to have twelve to fifteen students across a second to maybe sixth or seventh grade reading level, all those diverse needs with comprehension and even some of those students with fluency and decoding needs. We've been able to condense that to approximately one to one and a half grade levels with four to five, maybe six students in the class. Really intensive support for our students in that program. And again, I, I, I want to thank, I mean, we have the honor of serving students in this school district because like President Savage Williams said, if not in Evanston, I mean, this is Evanston, we're going to do these things. And we've been progressive and we've put resources to be able to try to address this issue and support our students. So I really appreciate the ability to be able to come and report on some of these things. Because in a lot of school districts, quite honestly, we wouldn't be talking about it and we certainly wouldn't be putting the type of resources into it. So thank you so much. Questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, thank you for the report and the information. Thank you for explaining flexible grouping, because I was going to ask that and you, you booked out for me, so appreciate that. Gretchen.
Thanks very much for this report. I think it was really a particularly great follow-on to our joint board meeting in November where I think we all saw, clamoring is maybe too strong a word, but a, a very strong interest expressed by both boards in trying to get to the heart of this issue. And the discrepancies, not just the fact that we're still trying to tackle this issue of students arriving at the high school who are not where we want them to be, but also, how can we even look at that problem and, and determine the magnitude of the problem or how to track the problem over time? And that gets to this measurement point that I think you were making as well. But I, just first, I want to say thank you because considering where we were on intensive reading going back before either of you were working in this area, I mean, we've, you know, come, you know, forget the flexible grouping for a minute. I mean, we were using a totally different program whose name I can't remember, but it was sort of a disaster. It just didn't work for us.
Read 180.
Read 180, yeah, there you go. See, I just blocked it out. And, and that didn't work. So I'm, I'm thrilled to hear about these creative attempts. And I agree, flexible grouping sounds, sounds amazing. But really, from a board perspective, I'm, I'm prob, you know, I leave the flexible grouping to you and I'm thrilled to hear about it. But I am most interested in sort of what this data tells us and how we can use it to establish priorities for our district that make sense so that we can actually move our students' progress, right? That's, that's what I really care about. And so my takeaway when I look at this and is that our students coming in from District 65 from fourteen to eighteen, the years 2014 to 2018, no matter whether we measure them using MAP or STAR, they're coming in at flat. I mean, it's the, it's been the same thing for four years, you know, over the course of these four years. So, you know, I'm looking at all students, as you pointed out, it, it, the average is about fifty-eight percent, fifty, if you use the STAR percent at GE. So it's fifty-eight percent, sixty percent, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and then sixty. So it's roughly fifty-eight percent. And then, you know, there's slightly more variation up and down, and it's also lower if we break it out by subgroup. But it's still, I would say, relatively flat. So our Black African-American students, that ranges from a low of twenty-two, which seems like a little bit of a blip in 2017, to a high of thirty-eight in the fall of 2018. And, you know, similar across the board with our white students performing at the higher and, you know, higher levels. And then the growth, we don't, you know, we seem to be pretty flat on our growth. And I, I don't mean to discount all these efforts because I think you've put into place the structures that with more time should, should change our ability to meet those growth targets. But right now, it's kind of flat. So, I mean, is it, I guess my question to you is, is it just a question of time? Are there, other than these, these new innovations that you're talking about, are there other things that are going to change this?
So I think a couple of things. One of the things that we didn't include in the report that, you know, maybe we could look at, at a later time, we can maybe send on later, was, you know, taking the two cohorts that were reported on in the latest achievement reports, we actually looked at where those students were in terms of grade equivalent in the fall and the spring each year. And what we found was that across the board, the student, like for all students, we had approximately the same number, approximately sixty percent of the students in the fall were, were at GE. And then by the spring, in terms of their growth, the students who tested both administrations were approximately around that eighty to eighty-four percent. And so I think what we're finding is that, you know, we have some concerns about, obviously, as students leave us for the summer and we're not engaged with them as much, how we have some declines in maybe skill, regression potentially, that then we see again when we test in the fall, we, we had growth throughout that school year, but then we're back to a starting pa, you know, place of, of where we don't want to be. And so I think that's one of the aspects that we're looking at. I think that was very instructive for us to kind of look back and see, okay, well, what can we do differently there as we move forward? I also would say that, you know, we, I think we do have some structures in place that are different now that we hope to yield some different results. But like I said, it is extremely challenging in terms of what we currently do versus what we might need to do to really demonstrate a different trend in terms of growth for students once they're already in high school.
Right, right. And which is why this measurement piece, and I'm going to let others talk now and I, I may need to come back to this point, but this figuring out STAR versus MAP, I think, is critical. And I'm, I'm quite sure that others are going to talk about that point. But I think that remains our challenge in working with our feeder district, District 65, so.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I want to echo what Gretchen said about, I think that what we're seeing you doing, the, the intensive reading, the smaller, the flexible grouping, is terrific stuff. And, but of course, you're the folks that figure out what to do and we're supposed to figure out, you know, what, what, what goals and, and targets and so forth. And I agree with you that both GE, that's grade equivalency and growth are both important. What concerns me in this report is that you mush the two together. That is, we have these bar graphs where we have a column that represents the percentage of students of, broken down by demographics and so forth, that were at grade equivalent level or met expected growth rates, okay? And, and I don't know about the rest of you, but one of the presentations we had that had the most impact on me was when Sean Reardon came in from Stanford
Yes.
and all of his research. And one of the things that, you know, one of the most striking gra, charts that he put up And one of the things that, you know, one of the most striking charts that he put up, and it was national data and it was also Evanston data, the same thing. He looked at the achievement, the racial achievement gap going up through grade levels. And what he found was that there was a gap at the beginning and everybody went up, but the gap persisted, okay? And he said, and he said, the reason for that is that even if you have growth, if you start from a low enough point, you're not going to, you know, you're not going to narrow the gap. So, I really think it's important in terms of our measurement and understanding our challenges to note separately how students are doing on grade equivalence and how they're doing on growth. Because if you mush the two together, it's hard to parse out, you know, maybe we're doing great on growth, but we're starting at too low a point or vice versa. So, I really think in the future, if you could separate out the growth and the expected growth and the meeting grade level, that would be helpful. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and maybe I'll kick off the discussion about MAP and STAR, but since I kicked it off at the last meeting. You know, I joined the District 65 Board in 2003. And at that time, guess what? We were fighting about assessment systems. And because District 65 had ISAT and we had Explore and we had exactly these same arguments. Because what would happen is kids would, ISAT would show a higher level of proficiency than for the same kids than they showed six months later on the Explore test. And District 65 would say, we have these really able proficient schools, kids, and you're failing them at ETHS. And ETHS would say back to District 65, you're not sending us good enough kids and that's why they're not succeeding at ETHS. And, you know, these numbers, not only is the MAP not predictive, these numbers are so stark. For example, there's a chart, Fall 2018, African-American students and the STAR percent, so these students, according to the MAP they took in eighth grade, 66% of them were proficient. And according to the STAR, they took, you know, a few months later in ninth grade, 38% of them were proficient. We cannot go on this way. This is intolerable. Now, I don't know who's right and we're not in the business of picking testing schemes. And maybe we need some sort of mediation between the two districts, you know? Maybe some of the folks from Northwestern could help us, you know, kind of break this knot. But we just, we can't go on this way.
Well, and I'll just add, if it's an either-or choice, the only choice is STAR. Because MAP is not usable for high school-age kids where STAR is usable from third grade forward. So, I don't know if it's an either-or, but if it's either-or, there is only one answer. And that is STAR would be a common assessment all the way through that can be used at the high school. And we can't use MAP.
Is there a third way?
I, see, that's why I worded it this way. That's why I worded it.
Pat? So, I just wanted to add on to that a little bit, that I thought you did a really nice job in the report. Because my first question, as I start, you know, I write the question down and I've read three lines and then realize you answer it later. But I thought you did a good job and I hope that this will, I really want to go to that meeting on Wednesday morning and unfortunately, I have work commitments and I can't. But I think that that discussion is really important. And what you did in the report about talking about STAR and that it is available, that data does help us third through 12th grade is terrific. And I think you talked about the fact that STAR is a shorter test, that they can still use MAP for, because they need some teaching, they need it for more directive on teaching, I think is how you worded it in the report. So, I think that it's there and I'm really excited that this conversation is happening on Wednesday because, and again, we're not in the business of picking STAR, MAP, or ABC. But what, but I think what is important is if we, and Gretchen has said this many times, if we're going to have this goal, we need to be able to compare apples to apples. And we are not doing that right now. And so, you know, again, we'll leave you, the experts, to decide what that is. But from the information I have in front of me, it seems to make sense that if STAR works across grade levels and can, MAP can still be used without being onerous and adding, you know, because we don't want that either, millions of tests. You know, I think that that's a really important discussion for Wednesday. So, I'm excited that that's happening.
Yeah, just really quickly, I mean, I certainly don't want to speak for District 65's assessment battery and how their, you know, their system and how they use those different assessments. However, I would say just to echo your, a couple of your comments, that the STAR assessment is rather easy to administer. It, average student takes approximately 20 minutes to take it. It is computer adaptive, just like the MAP test is. It is normed for all those grades. And so, some of those benefits just highlight for us, you know, how we could set more specific targets and benchmarks towards the goal to be able to report out, you know, across both districts. And I think that's something that we've been, we've heard at several meetings is, do we have some specific targets? Do we have some specific benchmarks around this goal? And we have some that were originally adopted in 2014, but both districts have seen multiple assessment changes since that time on multiple aspects of the goal. But one of the things that's remained consistent is in 2014, for the high school, the measure and the assessment that we articulated was STAR and we've been administering it consistently since that time. And so, from that perspective, I think, you know, again, there's a lot that STAR can tell an instructor, a classroom teacher, there's individualized reports, there's diagnostics that would benefit classroom instruction, just like MAP does for a lot of school districts. But, you know, that's, you know, I think that's the key part is, do we want to try to adopt something across both districts that we can use? Or do we want, well, I'm hearing we want to do that. But, you know, what does that look like? Is there a third option? Is there a different assessment that both districts can adopt? I don't, I'm open to all those things. But I think, you know, from what I'm hearing, and I think my call to action, as Jonathan articulated quite well, is you guys deal with governance and setting goals and things like that and we're going to make stuff happen. So, in order to make stuff happen, you know, I think we really do need some guidance and some support moving forward as the two districts collaborate on how we can get an assessment that measures across.
Yeah.
Just wanted to add something that the board would have for context. Kiwanah, can you speak to why this district moved away from using MAP and why we now use the STAR? Because that's a really important part of the conversation. We've been there and we've kind of evolved from this place of using MAP to measure reading.
Yeah, well, that's, as Scott just said, that was one of the reasons why. Because we were seeing that, well, first, you can't really use MAP for high school students. It doesn't norm beyond eighth grade. But also because of the, what STAR has to offer, especially for high school students, we were seeing that not only are we able to get all of the advanced reports that we're able to get, but for instruction, for individualized instruction for teachers, it was, it's such a useful tool. There's things embedded within the program itself that teachers are able to pull to use to actually pinpoint where students need growth, that they can pull right from the program, that they can implement in seconds. And it has a progression, it's built off of a progression unit where it tells you specifically where students should start in order to see the growth that we want them to have over time. So, teachers can actually access any of these reports, all of the instructional tools, from STAR. So, that was one of the strong selling points for us because we were seeing that it was highly successful for teachers just to be able to access these things at the drop of a hat, but also because it was normed well beyond eighth grade, so.
I think the other thing I'd just add, I mean, I came to the school district in 2012, 2013 and in my first year as English and Reading Department Chair, you know, we were administering the MAP test only in our reading support classes. And so, we had a handful of teachers, a handful of licenses. And what we found was that it's, at that time especially, it was a rather cumbersome product. You know, as a teacher, you would have to go to a separate portal to log in, to actually pull down the learning progressions and domains associated with the reading test, actually, you know, sift through that. Some of the reports weren't available to you as an individual teacher. You would have to have an onsite administrator, who happened to be our Director of Research and Evaluation Assessment, who would have to pull those reports and provide them for you. And for a school district, that's a high school district, that is only serving a small population of the students, we didn't have access to some of the bells and whistles of MAP that may be a school district that has all their students taking the assessment. And I know that MAP has improved its product over the years, but it's still a test that's normed and really designed for grades three through eight, not beyond eighth grade. So, I think, you know, that was another part that we really looked at was that our teachers didn't find the product helpful in terms of instructional responsiveness. It was helpful in terms of, you know, duplicating our placement process that we've tried to honor with District 65, to keep that measure as our placement, as part of our partnership and also was, you know, for program evaluation, but not really for individual responsiveness to student needs.
Could I ask a quick follow-up?
Sure.
So, when you say MAP isn't normed for high school students, is that another way of saying it doesn't adequately tell us how well students can read, what they have to read in high school? Because if you look at the numbers, they're so stark, it's hard to avoid the conclusion that MAP exaggerates the proficiency of the students versus what we're finding here. Is that a fair assessment of the assessment?
I think it's a fair, I think it's a fair takeaway from the information that you're being provided. I would say that there are administrators and reading specialists who are way more knowledgeable about MAP because they use it more readily and there are actually features of it that they can use. What I would say is that the norm piece for us, when we talk about that, is really that the tables, the grade level equivalents, the percentile ranks, all of the tables and analytics that are provided by NWEA, who's the provider for MAP, are based on research and analytics that were done for populations of students, eighth grade and below. So, we wouldn't be able to use that data to be able to say, oh, you're progressing towards grade level or there's a grade level equivalent to that MAP score for high school because no high school students were included in that sample to be able to provide that reporting. And so, you know, you might get a student who is doing really well with reading proficiency and might score in something that MAP would call like the 11th grade or something like that, based on those tables. However, that's not taking a group of 11th graders and norming what expected performance is. That's taking a student who's expected to perform at a level for, let's say, a sixth grader in the second month of learning in sixth grade, what's expected growth and performance for that child compared to everyone else who took this test in that window? And then, what can we extrapolate from that? Which is quite different than an 11th grader or a 10th grader who just happens to be reading at a grade level equivalent of sixth grade.
Let me see if I can ask this in a simpler way. I want to just put, you know, some numbers around this. In the fall of 2018, the
Which one are you on?
I'm on the incoming grade nine reading proficiency STAR MAP assessment, fall 2014 through 18.
All students? The all students? You want me to put it back up?
Yeah. So, we had what, what did we have in 2018? 800 kids in the freshman class, round number?
Yeah.
All right, so if you believe the blue line, which is the STAR, right? We had 40%, so 320 kids that came to us that were not reading at grade level.
Correct.
Right? If you believe the other one, 16%, if you believe MAP, 16% of 800 is what, 128? Is that right?
Approximately, yeah.
Which is closer? I mean, you were on the ground with them, right? Which is closer?
Yeah. Well, I think, here's the crux that I would say, is that it's closer to the blue, it's closer to the STAR, but we're serving the students from the orange because that's what we use for placement. And so, as we continue to use MAP scores for placement and to identify intervention, we're going to have that gap mark.
So, you're telling me that we know that it's closer to 320 kids, but we're only going to serve 128 of them in the way that we really ought to be?
We serve approximately?
And Jonathan's right, this can't go on.
That's unacceptable.
It's unacceptable, this cannot persist.
If you know that it's closer to the blue, you know that and the kids are coming in and we're not servicing them and we only have three and a half years, right? So, time is of the essence. We have to do this in a pretty aggressive way right out, right out the bat.
Now, I get it that, you know, this is a problem that needs to be solved more than in this room, right? But I think this is going to have to be a big topic going forward.
Yeah.
Well, it clearly, I mean, I'm so glad, yeah, I mean, we did, we did adopt the joint goal five years ago. So, I mean, we made it a priority at that point. And I think we've been, you know, and I'm happy to take some blame a little bit for not holding our feet to the fire on how we measure that goal. It's something that I made noise about over the years, on and off. And our joint committee meetings have been designed to address that point. Our joint board meetings have this on the agenda on a recurring basis to address this point. But I think really where we are right now is we have a joint committee meeting on Wednesday morning. This is on that agenda, thank you. And I think we need to be very singular in our focus. I'm going to be at that meeting because I think this is critically important. And I think we need to be really singular in how we're approaching this. If, you know, currently, we have a measurement system from two districts and they're fighting one another as everybody here is in agreement. And I think everybody over at District 65 recognizes the problem as well. So, then the question is, what are we going to do about it? And whether that means we pick, I don't think there's any way we implement MAP. I think we've made that clear. So, we either adopt STAR or there has to be this third way that people have alluded to. And I'm, you know, as a board member, again, not our, not our job. So, if District, and it seems to me that it's incumbent on District 65. If they have a third way, then let's hear about it. Otherwise, we need to get moving on STAR. But honestly, we've lost years, I think, in how we look at this. And I think we need to pick it up and we need to get on the same page and get this done. And we have our work cut out for us at the joint committee meeting and then at the February joint board meeting where really we need to get, we need to get it done.
I do want to give those kudos to Kiwanah, to Scott, to our reading group. Because we, I don't think we at the high school have lost as many years as it may seem for this reason. We recognized that what we were receiving just wasn't useful to us in placement. And so, we adopted the STAR several years ago in order to have a tool that could be more useful, more reliable for us in placement, while at the same time allowing us to assess our students. And we do, as I've pointed out before, pre and post-test every fall and every spring, every grade level, every student in the high school. Because we really realized if we were going to move towards this reading goal, we needed to start having data that informed the high school. And the other thing I think, Kiwanah, that you did such a nice job about tonight is explaining why the STAR informs our instruction. And MAP did not inform instruction at the high school. It's just that simple. And I'm not saying it doesn't inform instruction, grades three through eight, but it was not informing instruction. So, I do want to give at least a little encouragement. We haven't been sitting by losing the last five years. We, but I know what you're saying, Ms. Livingston. But as a K through 12 entity, maybe we need to be a little more consistent and common in what we look at. But to these folks and to many, and we keep adding, I refer to it now, we have an army of reading teachers and people who are reading endorsed. And, you know, there was a day that basically we had hardly anybody at the high, you know, a few reading teachers because that's just the way it was viewed at the high school. So, I do want to give a shout-out. We haven't been standing still and we've really been working hard to do what our component of the reading goal would be.
Could you go over, I know that you went quickly over the teachers who are enrolled in the Northeastern program. You said, I'll write it down this time?
We have four English teachers, three special education teachers.
We have four English teachers, three special education teachers, two science, and one paraprofessional who has a background in teaching, but she's not a current certified teacher.
But that doesn't tell the whole story, because over the last several years, we've had a number of teachers getting reading endorsements.
Right, and-
And I don't know what that total number is, and maybe you don't-
We're just speaking specifically to the, to the incentivized partnership, and we were very intentional around developing a, a cadre of teachers who are reading service. That's just really about that.
Right, and I guess that's, that's my point, is that they're not all English teachers.
Correct.
So, that's really because this is so important for all across curriculum, so that's um-
Good point.
Yeah, that's important.
I, I did catch something that I wanted to clarify for, for the, for the board, and that is that there are students that we capture in the blue who are not in the orange, and we do make an attempt to serve those kids. Kiwana does a, what's called an IRI, an individual reading inventory with those kids, and so that we do get them appropriately placed once we find them. We just don't find everybody, I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, we don't find-
Us that we were, you know, not, somehow not serving our students, what I meant is that we, we aren't keeping track of it in a way that helps, helps um guide what we're doing, so I just-
My point is, we, we gotta get this solved, this shouldn't take an extra, you know, well, we gotta find a workaround. We shouldn't have to find a workaround, this should be more seamless, and we've gotta figure this out.
You know, if we're using a, a, a universal screener for placement in the MAP, and it's under identifying students who need reading support, then we need to make a change.
Yeah.
That's true, because I, I, I thought we, we'd try to start in the summer before they come here. And if we don't identify them until the fall, then we've lost time, and you already indicated that stu- students lose in the summer. We know, we know that about all students, particularly students who don't spend time reading, there's regression that occurs. So, in order to avoid that, we, we need to try to get to them as soon as possible, and we need to identify them accurately before they leave junior high.
Pat, can I just ask a quick question? So, Marcus answered the first part of my question, which is, so when you figure out that the, the ch- the student needs this help, and it wasn't initially identified, so that's very helpful. But the other piece I was hoping you could talk a little bit about is the summer, because what you were saying in your report was that we've made some nice progress, some nice growth, and then you kind of go back to Groundhog Day in September. So, what are you doing in the summer, what are some examples of things you're doing in the summer, once you've gotten the kids and you're, and you're helping them to move them forward and keep them there?
Yeah, so one of the, one of the places that we see this applied is in, uh, in our science uh curriculum a lot. And so, one of the things that Kiwana did, and I'm T this level, you can talk about it. Is that, I don't, you should talk about it. But uh, there's a course that Kiwana designed with our science department to support students who um do not take biology freshman year because of where they're at with reading proficiency, and who are in our Biology with Support course sophomore year, and have already been identified for, for support, um, who, who may or may not have reading intervention in their freshman year. Most of them do, but not all of them do. And so, Reading and Science Course, that Kiwana can tell you a little bit about.
Yeah, so the Reading and Science Course, um, I developed about two years ago, and it's taught, it's co-taught by both a reading teacher and a science teacher. And the goal of the course is to give students exposure to especially academic vocabulary that they will find most troubling when they have school during academic, science during academic school year. Um, and then they spend a lot of time um looking at literacy strategies for students to help them become successful in especially ac- academic vocabulary, as well as processes that they need to be successful in science, like following labs and um how to do multi-tiered um instructions simultaneously. So, these are concepts that they build upon in this, in the summer. And one of the strengths in that course also is that a lot of the students who have um Ms. Tyranda Woods for the summer also have her in the fall, so not only are they able to build relationships with her during the summer, but they're um giving this exposure to, you know, just the background that they need in order to be successful. And we've seen success in that class, about seventy-eight percent of the students, African-American male students who've taken the class, have either received an A or a B in the class um last year, and they're highly successful this year, and they love the course. So it's, it's a lot about just building the relationships that make them believe that they can do it, and they're getting that in that class, especially starting in the summer. Um, and so, we're effortlessly recruiting students to come in the summer, 'cause that's always the hardest part, it's getting the students who need to be here to, to actually be here. Um, but just in the results that we're seeing, um, just really makes us, you know, really hit the ground hard and, and try to um get those students to come here in the summer.
Also, another course this year that you just approved in December is the STEM and Sports Course, which we are, instead of running a prep to humanities, kind of biology course, we're, we're trying to integrate that support and, and intervention in the STEM and Sports Course as well this summer. Um, our Reading and Math into the Social Context, um, you know, Mr. Farmer comes and gives a report on that every summer as a summer school principal. Um, that's another intentional area. The sophomore reading course is during the school year, um, class that is for sophomore students, 'cause prior to that, we only had reading intervention for the last number of years. Before I worked here long ago, there was reading all four years, potentially for students who needed that support, but in the last, you know, decade, it's prob- it's, it's been just freshmen. And so, we identified that we did have students who maybe needed support beyond freshman year, to be able to provide that support. We also have um identified students who maybe um were, were identified as potentially benefiting from our Avid program in freshman year, and we have a list of those students who we're going to try to encourage to enroll in the program as sophomores, um, who might also be, uh, you know, a certain population that uh might be in between that blue and orange kind of gap.
Great, thank you very much.
Another example, though, Cradle to Career has put a lot of emphasis into this, and, and has, and has worked with all of its agencies and partners to incorporate summer reading into all of their programs. And, and a good shout-out would be uh to Lawrence Hemingway and the Summer uh Parks and Rec Programs. They have a drop in everything and read component every day now in their summer, and this just started like the year before last, uh, in, in their, their uh Summer Park and Recreation Programs because of this initiative. Uh, also, uh, the, the Summer Jobs Program run through the city, which employs like, what, five hundred youth? Uh, they do a drop everything and read every day uh in, in, in that program. So, uh, and of course, the YMCA incorporates it in their summer programs. Uh, the Edson Public Library has worked on this a long time, and, and does a lot of programs to generate. So I wanna, eh, eh, by the way, and it's still not mitigating our issue. But I think it's really important to know that there is this city effort that's been trying to, to increase summer reading in every aspect that we touch youth in the community. And, and, and I think it is worthwhile and worth continuing to put energy into, 'cause even though it hasn't mitigated it right now, uh, clearly, we know that the best way to increase reading skills or not lose them is to read. And so, so it's really good to have seen this as well.
Okay, other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Great report, lots of good discussion, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, where is my agenda? Here it is. Okay, we are at the Popular Annual Financial Report.
And, and I'll uh, uh, set Mary up by saying this is gonna be really brief, uh, because you have it and you can read it. But we wanted to highlight it just quickly, not only for the board, but, but for other folks who pay attention to our board meetings, that, that this is available, that it's out, and that there's a lot of really good information in it. So Mary, if you would run through that, we'd appreciate it.
I'm not sure if it's coincidental that we do the award for one and then present the other one, so you'll all have good feelings about it.
Yeah, I think, I think that's intentional.
I don't, I didn't remember those being on the same night, but that's how it worked out. So, um, we have been at it again, we do publish this once a year, and um, most of you, I think, have um seen the electronic copy that was included in the packet, and now you have the printed copy if you prefer. What's different from the other reports that are produced, eh, I'm gonna say other financial type reports that are produced here, is that this is a really brief version, eh, and as Eric mentioned earlier, it's designed for people who are not necessarily used to looking at financial statements or don't have any interest in looking at a hundred pages of numbers. Um, so I like this because it, it can easily be interpreted and understood um by students, by public, by staff, parents, and any other interested parties. So, I think this is the, the one that we like to take when we're um speaking to the public, because it's a nice summary. So, eh, the, the technical part is that it's basically an overview of the financial and other highlights from the district's year. It does include things like enrollment numbers, goals, budget strategy, revenue and expense highlights, and events and awards from the past year. Uh, you know, we don't, we don't pick all of those things that are focused on in this document, they're certainly our guidelines by uh, the Government Finance Officers Award Program that uh Eric mentioned earlier. But um, but we do have some liberty as far as what, uh, what types of things we wanna talk about in the document. So, you might remember, because it, it was just December when we um presented you with what we call the CAFER, which is the Comprehensive Financial Report, and that's the one that's, I don't know, a hundred and fifty pages or something. But uh, this tries to summarize the highlights of that document in an easier-to-read format, while also talking about things like budget challenges, outside threats, and positive aspects. So, there are some highlights, uh, I think it's pages five and six. Um, revenue highlights include where does the money come from, so we put it in easy terms, you know, how does a district get their money? And of course, as we all know, the main funding sources include our property taxes, so we talk a little bit about that. And uh, new this year, we talk a little bit about the evidence-based funding, which replaced the General State Aid, um, and, and then some of the other types of federal and special education uh aid. And then the next page um talks about the opposite, where does the money go? Both of those pages include pie charts similar to what we have in our CAFER, um, that lets the reader easily see that the main source of our revenues are property taxes, and the main source of our expenditures are salaries and benefits. Um, but then also talks a little bit about some of the other categories of expenses. So, along with like a one-page summary for each, there's a pie chart within those pages so that people can see it as well as read it. Um, some of the kudos and academic reports and highlights in the document, I just wanted to touch on, uh, for those of you who haven't read it yet. There are student kudos, such as the National Merit Semi-finalists and the Speech and Debate Team accomplishments. Um, there's a, an article about how AP test participation is at an all-time high. Um, and then um Kathy always surveys the school and, and looks at what's been happening, and she writes the articles about recent renovations and uh, uh, things like Chem Phys Center, the Entrance Three opening. And also, there's a story on student activism, how our students express their views, and then um, living history in the library, and also our public safety antenna system that we um put into place about a year ago, and um, the Field House naming that took place this year as well. Well, look at that, I'm all done. I, I was running out of pages in the book, so I knew we were getting close. Uh, so again, just like to really publish this for the board and the community, just so um we can talk about some of the, the great things we're doing here in an easy-to-read format, only touch a little bit on the finances so we don't bore people, so.
It is a popular report.
It is.
I know in my family, and on my block, you know, people are waiting to get this.
No, people commented-
Just because you're going off the board doesn't mean you don't like fun of me.
No, I, well, I wanna say in all seriousness that it is, it is a very-
It is good, though.
Positive, easy read, so thank you to Kathy, 'cause I know you did a great job um writing and, and sharing interesting and really great things about ETHS. But I also wanna say that the, and the financials are so easy and clear to understand, which is really important, 'cause most people, really, this is, this is hel- extremely helpful. Much more than they would norm- I know you're only kidding.
You know, I, I was making a joke, we've been here a long time, but, but seriously, you know, ever since we started doing this, when I first saw it, it was like eureka, why, you know?
I agree.
This is great.
This is great.
Because, as you say, ninety-nine percent of the people out there, they don't, you know, they're paying their taxes, and they know what that is, but they don't really know what goes on around here, and it's not easy, it's like taking a drink from the fire hose if you step into a board meeting, so-
I totally agree, yeah.
This is a really nice, you know, readable, usable, meaningful summary. And Kathy, thank you for your, for your good work on it, and Mary, you know, and this is, uh, this is really a good report.
Well, yeah, I never really asked Bill Stafford what made him, I mean, I, I know that it was another standard in the industry, and he and I were both big with the government finance officers.
Plaque on the wall.
He does like plaques, and then we had all the plaques on the wall when he was here. But um, you know, we both had a background in government finance officers, so I, I'm not sure, well, you know, how many school districts do uh, this Popular Annual Financial Report, but, you know, otherwise, right, a lot of people aren't staying up until ten o'clock at night to see my budget presentation or the CAFER, and if you tried to open one of those documents there-
As interesting as it is.
I know, it's hundreds of pages long, and so, I, I, I don't know if he ever felt that there was a missing link, I never really thought to ask him what the motive was, but I think to, to your comment, it's sort of eureka, I mean, why?
And actually, it's all about trying to be more transparent about our budget.
I'm sure you guys had many conversations about it.
How, the budget book, how we not present our budget, uh, eh, eh, although it's way longer than most people wanna read. But the idea, let's not just give a bunch of budget sheets, let's actually put a budget that you can read a narrative and understand it. And this was a, 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 a timely follow-up, that we, that we wanted something that was easy to read, uh, but buried to the point of, of, about the finances of the district.
And it also gives information about the school.
Yeah, right.
And what's going on in the school, and just, you know, the, the pictures, it's laid out very nicely.
And for me, we, I think we do documents of both types. Uh, you know, we have opening school report and some things that the Communications Office does, and then we have the big financial reports. But for me, this is one of the few documents that we have in the district that sort of combines all of that, and, and it's in, I don't know, what is it, ten, twelve pages? So, sixteen, Kathy says, sixteen, it's not that anyone's counting, so.
And just not to get lost in, in the prettiness of it, is that just, yeah, again, another opportunity for us to thank you that these numbers are all great. Because so many school districts, no matter how pretty their report, no matter how many glossy pages, could not tell this financial story.
If their numbers are bad, they're probably not gonna-
They're probably not, they're not popular, we know that, Mary, but I'm just saying, kudos to you and your team and to the administration, because we are able to tell the, I mean, that isn't lost in this story, that this is great work.
After these meetings, and I have a really hard time going to sleep, and tonight I'll be going, and I'll be thinking about reading proficiency and all these things. And I worry about a lot of things, and, you know, certainly in, in Illinois School Finance, there's a lot to worry about, right? But in terms of how we take care of our business here, I, it never keeps me awake at night. I sleep really well, and I can't tell you as a board member how much I appreciate that, and have for the entire ten years I've, I've been here.
And as a fellow finance person, I appreciate that even more, because Mark could find it if there was a problem, I'm sure. Not that anybody else couldn't, but Mark could, he could call me on it, so I appreciate that.
Alright. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Kathy. Okay, we are at Comments from the Public, Dr. Beavis, do we have?
There are no uh comments from the public this evening.
Alright, okay, um, FOIA, we have?
Uh, we have-
One, two, three, four, five?
We have five FOIAs in the packet, and the responses are included.
Okay, any questions about the FOIA, FOIAs? Alright, um, Board Committee Reports, I know we just got back from winter break, I don't know that we have any. We should at, at our next meeting, 'cause we have a couple of board committees coming up. Alright, so we are at Student Board Report, my favorite part.
Okay, so, um, winter break was the week before, uh, two weeks before this week. Um, and overall, there was like a very, it was fine, you know, it was just like a nice, um, it was very restful, restful breaks all around. Um, the email ba- uh, bla-
Um, the email ba, uh, blast last Thursday surrounding the allegations against an ETHS employee, kind of. Um, it had students talking for sure. Uh, there was a lot of confusion at first about what exactly was going on. It kind of took people, it took me by surprise. And it definitely took other people by surprise. And it, it's with finals and everything, it's kind of left people's minds, but, um, not completely. Um, so now we're in the belly of the beast with finals. And juniors got to visit with the puppies. And I got to visit with the puppies last year and I was a little jealous that I did not get to see the dogs again. But that was really good and it's definitely a good initiative just to kind of show students, um, that the school and the administration is recognizing how stressful this time can be. Um, and just like giving some kind of, not reward, but, um, activity to support them. But there was definitely some jealousy from the classes that were left out. Um, so with finals comes conversations around finals. And a lot of those conversations, the most common conversations, um, are that students were too stressed over break because they were thinking about finals or that teachers didn't allow the week for review and instead they were just giving them more content. So then students only had winter break and the weekend before break to study for finals. And the most common one that they forgot everything over winter break. So luckily enough, the message has spread and students know that next year finals will be before break. Um, so the underclassmen are very pleased to, like, know that. And it's definitely getting around this year, like before, probably even two weeks, two weeks ago, a large majority of the student population didn't know that finals were going to be before break. Um, and now because finals are here, they, the message has got around. Um, so the underclassmen are pleased, but the seniors are just, they're eager to be done with their final, final. So aside from finals, um, second semester's coming up. And basically, um, it's a new year, it's a new semester, and there's a new outlook on what's to come, um, specifically for me and what student union is planning for the upcoming year. And also outside of the school, what like student activism has going on. Um, so over winter break, I met up with Liana Wallace and Molly Hartenstein again um, at the new Collectivo downtown, which is really nice, really good for studying. Um, and we discussed our plans for next semester. And at the top of our list is to create a coalition of student activists from schools around the North Shore um, so that we can confront issues involving like politicians, schools, or any other, uh, big power players as a united front of students. So a big hope is to incorporate underclassmen so that way, if the coalition does continue, that after Molly, Liana, and I graduate, it will have people who can take it over. Um, right now, I'm really excited. The tentative acronym is NASA, uh, the North Shore Association of Student Activists. So cross our fingers I get to keep it. And right now, student union is in the process of organizing what administrators and community leaders we want to, um, reach out to and assist us in the goals that we have planned. So lots of initiatives coming in the second semester, which I'm really excited about. So, yeah, that's it. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, Dr. Witherspoon.
And Phoebe, thank you for being here in the midst of your final exam week. Uh, but we know you're very conscientious and somehow you managed to juggle final exams as well as your board responsibilities, so, uh, great job. Just several, uh, quick highlights. Um, I, I want to point out that, uh, we have, uh, freshman course selection nights, uh, this Wednesday and Thursday night here at the high school. There are six o'clock in the evening sessions and I think the others like 7:30. Uh, but families have been notified. Uh, but I would just like to point out that if anybody wants a reminder about, uh, coming for freshman, uh, course selection night, uh, the details are on our website. And we're expecting somewhere in the range of eight to 900 freshmen and their families over those two nights. We're all going to be pretty busy here. Next week, we're going to be hosting the college planning for juniors and their parents. This is on January the 24th at 6:30 PM. That too, we've been putting out information, that too is on our website. But, um, juniors and families, uh, it's a great opportunity to come to this college planning night, January 24th. The, uh, ETHS Music Honors Recital, uh, will be held, uh, January the 29th. That's at 7:00 PM. It's open to the public and well worth, uh, an, an evening at ETHS. Uh, we have two great upcoming Family Action Network, uh, events planned this month. Fan, as most of you know it to be. Uh, one is on Friday, January the 25th. Uh, this is a must-attend event, uh, because Dr. David Blight, uh, will be interviewed by, uh, the, uh, the renowned Dr. Marcus Campbell, um, uh, who's going to interview Professor Blight on the, uh, presentation titled Frederick Douglass: Prophet of Freedom. Uh, if you've not, uh, seen, uh, Dr. Campbell, uh, conduct an interview like this, uh, you are in for a treat. Uh, he is just profoundly good at it. And, uh, believe me, Professor, uh, Blight is getting a lot of attention around the country right now, uh, for his work on Frederick Douglass. So I just can't say enough. Must-attend event, Friday, the 25th of January, ETHS. Uh, the other, uh, equally as important, it will be January, Wednesday, January 30th. That's Dr. Ebou Patel, uh, who's going to join us, uh, for an event called, "Out of Many Faiths: Religious Diversity and the American Promise." This is at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Uh, these events are open and free to the public, uh, but, uh, come early to be sure you get a good seat. Um, our annual Jazz Festival will be held, uh, Saturday, February the 9th. And, uh, there's a lot of information available, uh, on our website about that as well. And finally, a couple of important calendar reminders. There will be no school this Friday, uh, January 18th as, uh, as semester finals have ended. And then, uh, there will be no school on Monday, January the 21st for, uh, in honor of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. And second semester then will begin on Tuesday, January the 22nd. And there is a lot of excitement about that, Phoebe. And finally, on January the 22nd, when we reopen, uh, after the semester break, uh, we will also have summer school registration begin. Yes, here we are, already talking about summer school registration. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. All right, so we are at our action items. The first item is approval of press policy issue number 99. That was in our packet in December. So could I have a motion, please?
Are we also including policy number 5:20 in that motion? Or are we doing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, if it includes it, I, I move.
Yep.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Can I just, I, I just wanted to, uh, highlight section 520 and the, uh, revision, this really, the strengthening of our sexual harassment policy. And I wanted to thank my colleagues for supporting this revision. And I'm just so proud that I think this, just the way we've been a state and national leader in protecting our Dreamers, in guaranteeing the rights of our transgender students, and now we can be a state and national leader in saying that we're not going to confine the sexual harassment that we won't tolerate to that which is strictly illegal. So I, I'm really, I'm, I'm proud of our, our district.
Okay, moved in second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. The next item is the Black History Resolution, and I am going to read it. National Black History Month, February 2019. Whereas millions of people were taken from their homes in Africa in chains and were in slavery, and whereas from 1619 to 1865, slavery was legal in the United States of America. And whereas 12 generations of blacks survived and lived in the United States as enslaved people with an incalculable human cost that continues to impact our society and culture. Whereas on the eve of the, the, the American Civil War, approximately 4 million enslaved African-Americans lived in the southern region of the United States of America. And these enslaved people were the descendants of 12 to 13 million African forebears ripped from their homes and forcibly transported to the Americans in a massive slave trade during the 1400s. Whereas this forced migration is one of the greatest human tragedies in the history of the world. Whereas the Celebration of Black History Month began in February 1926 with the vision of Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted historian committed to encouraging all people to learn about the contributions of outstanding African-Americans. Whereas the students and staff of Evanston Township High School must continue to learn about the mind, to learn and be mindful of African-Americans on a national and local level who have worked to serve the public good. Whereas the ETHS community should welcome and learn from all people of color to support the destruction of beliefs and practices that racially segregate and hinder students from believing that the American dream is for everyone. Whereas the ETHS community should also continually dedicate itself to the principle of equal justice for all people, remain in eternally vigilant against acts, acts of racism and bigotry, and continue to be a leader in empowering all students through education. Therefore, we, the District 202 School Board, proclaim that in celebration of past, present, and future exceptional African-American leaders, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2019 as Black History Month at Evanston Township High School.
I move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next is approval of laser field turf replacement and co-op pricing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next is approval of external, exterior signage bid.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next is the consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes from December 17th, 2018, closed session meeting, December 17th, 2018, regular meeting, treasurer's report from October 18th, 2018, and November 2018, approval of bills, personnel agenda, appointments to staff exempt, change in status, salary adjustment, educational and stipends, leave of absence, support staff, resignation, certified and coach, retirement from exempt, release of safety, negotiated agreement, student management personnel. And we have an addendum, um, which includes a resignation of support staff.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. We're at old and new business. Do we have either old or new business? So for closing, I'll ask if anybody on the board would like to offer any comments? Otherwise, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned at 10:01 PM.